Good evening and welcome to the June 3, 2021 recess meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I'm Daniel Weir, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, substituting for Chair Jim Lattelme, who was unavailable to be present tonight. This is the second of two evenings scheduled for our public hearings. Tonight, we will be hearing proposed amendments to the Clarendon Revitalization District Height Map to account for modifications to proposed buildings at 3275 and 3251 Washington Boulevard and items regarding Phase Development Site Plan Number 346 and Site Plan Number 346, known as Land Base C in Crystal City. Note that we will be hearing the minutes of last month's meeting as well as committee reports at our July meeting. Some items, and now for some items that are required of me to share with you. For the safety of our staff and residents, we are holding this meeting virtually. And welcome to our commissioners, to county staff, to applicants and community members who will all be joining us remotely. We are legally authorized to hold this virtual meeting based on the governor's executive orders of legislation adopted by the Virginia General Assembly and by the county board's continuity of operations ordinance adopted in March 2020. Before I begin, I have a few specifics to orient everyone to our virtual environment. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085 via Arlington Phios Channels 39 and 40 and via the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. I understand that you can use the conference number provided in the team's invite, and registered speakers have received Ms. Johnson's telephone number in their speaker registration confirmation. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is located on your meeting command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. If you are dialing in by phone, you may press star six to unmute. Commissioners, if you wish to be recognized to speak, please use your hand raise function or turn on your video, unmute your microphone to signal your interest, and I will call upon you in order. Public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's meeting was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. A public comment will take place within the same timeframes as we would provide at an in-person meeting. Speakers will have three minutes to comment as individuals and five minutes to speak if representing an organization. A speaking timer will be displayed on the screen by the clerk. If you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible warning when 30 seconds are remaining, and you will be muted when your time is concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters and commissioners who need technical assistance only. Do not use the meeting chat for discussion. For public comment or questions about agenda items or requests for more information, all public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. And lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Our agenda items tonight are, as mentioned, Land Base C and the amendment to map one of the Clarendon Revitalization Area. I believe, Madam Clerk, am I right that Land Base C is first?
Actually, the Clarendon item is first.
I was wrong, okay. Let me...
But that's okay, because I'm going to announce it anyway.
I was just gonna say, let me ask you to announce the first item then, unless there's anything that I've omitted.
Nope, thank you. Perfect. As our Chair Weir has mentioned, we will begin with item number four for the Clarendon Revitalization District. That is ZOA-2021-02. We have Matt Lad and Kevin Lamb to present these items from our planning staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lamb and/or Mr. Lad. Mr. Lad, you are on mute.
Thank you. I guess I will be kicking this off-
First, yes, you'll be kicking off the unmute. You're like lottery this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Matt Lad with the county's planning division. I'll be providing a brief background on planning and zoning in Clarendon before handing it over to Kevin Lamb, who will get into the specifics of tonight's item. So the purpose of this agenda item is relatively limited in scope. If we can go to the next slide. Relatively limited in scope, we're presenting a proposed revision to the maximum height limit map in the section of the zoning ordinance that covers Clarendon. This proposed map revision is for a single building, part of the Clarendon West Site Plan, originally approved in 2015. You might also know it as the Red Top Cab Project, and it's located at the northeast corner of Washington Boulevard and 13th Street. The developer applied for a site plan amendment earlier this year seeking to change the overall height profile of the building. The proposed change to the building's design eliminates the top floor and extends the footprint of some upper floors, and Mr. Lamb will be presenting those changes in more detail. While the proposed change in design results in a more gradual taper in height, it exceeds the tapering requirement of the current height map in the zoning ordinance, shown on the left. The proposed map on the right reflects the proposed heights, and the county board cannot approve the requested site plan unless it also amends this map and the zoning ordinance. Over time, the county has taken a range of approaches to implementing its sector plans. For those of you who have been following the Clarendon Sector Plan Update process with LRPC, you'll know Clarendon is one of Arlington's less flexible planning areas with less discretion given to the county board to consider site plans that don't meet the letter of the zoning regulations. Next slide. So how does this building height change for the Red Top Cab site relate to the ongoing LRPC process to review updates to the Clarendon Sector Plan? First, this site is outside the study area for this Sector Plan update. That study area is shown in white, and the Clarendon West site is in yellow on this map. Also, we are discussing changes to an approved site plan, which was the subject of community review through a joint ZOLO LRPC meeting and multiple SPRC meetings back in 2015 when the project was originally approved. Finally, the proposed changes to height for Clarendon West meet the definition of a minor site plan amendment and do not increase the project's density. Next slide. The zoning ordinance provisions for Clarendon mirror the guidance in the Sector Plan, including a map governing building heights known as Map One. This map controls height in two different ways. It specifies maximum heights in feet, which is pretty straightforward. Those are just the numbers on the map. It also uses arrows to indicate areas where building heights must be within a taper plane. The spring point for that taper plane is based on the distance from the nearest R or RA zoning districts. From that point, building heights can increase by one vertical foot for each three horizontal feet or a one-to-three ratio. So to correctly interpret the map, you need to look at both Map One in the zoning ordinance and then the actual zoning map shown below. And the zoning text specifies that the county board cannot approve heights that exceed these height regulations. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Lamb to review the history of the project and a more detailed analysis of the proposed height changes. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Lad. So in terms of the brief timeline, in 2006, the Clarendon Sector Plan was adopted, and in 2008, the county board amended C3 zoning district regulations for projects within the Clarendon Revitalization District, which codified many of the guidelines of the Sector Plan. In 2015, the county board then approved Site Plan Number 438 for the construction of three new residential buildings known as Clarendon West, as well as a zoning ordinance amendment to revise maps one to eight in order to reflect changes to the block structure, as well as to revise Map One in order to reflect the current heights of Building One. So this graphic shows this series of revisions to Map One, which is also known as the Maximum Height Limit Map. So in 2015-
Did I freeze or did Mr. Lamb freeze?
I believe it was me. Sorry about that. Can you hear me okay?
Thank you. Yes.
Can you see the screen still?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So sorry about that. So in 2015, the county board approved the current map for, to reflect the changes in the block structure and the height profile as proposed. The applicant is now proposing minor adjustments to the height of Building One, which do not conform with the current map, in particular, the tapering requirements indicated by these arrows. Therefore, up for consideration is a revision to the map to be consistent with the heights the applicant is now proposing. So taking a closer look at the 2015 approval, Map One was amended concurrently with Site Plan 438. However, due to an error interpretation, a portion of the approved building heights technically exceeds the tapering requirements of Map One, which I will show in the next slide. However, in any event, the intent of the county board approval is clear, which was to amend Map One in order to allow the site plan to be constructed as approved. So here shows the inconsistency between the current map and the approved heights. So the arrows here represent where the one-to-three tapering plane applies, while a maximum height is allowed in this purple area. So over here in red is the area that exceeds the tapering requirement, as measured from the zoning district boundary, also in red. During the 2015 approval, the 165-foot buffer zone was instead measured from the adjacent property boundary, shown in blue, because there was sufficient open space buffers between the development and the residential neighborhood. So essentially, while the heights in the approved building meets the spirit of the Clarendon Sector Plan in that there are reduced heights closer to the lower-density residential areas, it does not meet the text of the zoning ordinance, which requires that the 165-foot buffer be measured from the zoning district boundary. So just moving on to the proposed changes, the applicant is requesting several amendments, which among other things includes lowering the overall building height and changes to the building form on level seven to 10. So Level 11 is proposed to be eliminated, which reduces the overall height of the building from 103 feet to 94.1 feet. Also, while the total GFA of Building One remains unchanged, a reallocation of GFA throughout the building will add square footages on the upper floors. So the expansion on level seven to 10 will be achieved through increased floor plates, as you can see here and here. So here are just some building elevations showing the reduced height. Shown in blue is what a three-to-one tapering plane looks like, as well as the maximum height limit of 95 feet. So with the elimination of Level 11 and the expanded floor plates on levels seven and eight and nine and 10 up here, the proposed building has a both overall lower building height as well as a more gradual height profile. So here are some ground level views of the building. So here at the top shows the view from the planned park at Washington and 13th Street, and the bottom shows the view from Fairfax Drive with Washington Boulevard and Building One in the foreground. And as you can see, the changes to the upper floors are pretty minor from the street level. So these graphics show the inconsistency between the approved map and the proposed heights. The area shaded in red exceeds the tapering requirement as measured from the zoning district boundary. Because the proposed change in height exceeds the tapering requirement, the county board may only approve the proposed heights through an amendment to the Maximum Height Limit Map. So here is the proposed Maximum Height Limit Map. The proposed revision replaces the arrows, which indicate a three-to-one tapering requirement, as well as the overall height maximum of 110 feet with a clearly defined maximum heights of 55 feet, 75 feet, and 95 feet. So in conclusion, the Maximum High Limit Map is being revised to be consistent with the proposed heights. The overall reduction in building height and changes to the building form on the upper floors creates a more gradual height profile. So while the design is less impactful on the surrounding neighborhood, the height adjustments exceed the tapering plane, which is a requirement that cannot be modified under the zoning ordinance. Therefore, the only way to consider these height adjustments is to revise the Maximum High Limit Map. So finally, staff presented the zoning ordinance amendment at the May 11th Joint ZOLO LRPC meeting. Members present expressed support of the change, as it is consistent with the intent of the Clarendon Sector Plan and does not pose any aesthetic concerns. The manner change to the map is also consistent with the original 2015 approval and the overall height transitions. There are also no public speakers at the meeting. So with that, at this time, planning staff, as well as the Shushan team who are joining us tonight, welcome any feedback or clarifying questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder for those present and for my peers and for myself, that it's our tradition with special club amendments and club amendments that we welcome the applicant to provide public comment, but we will begin with public comment rather than a presentation from the applicant, unless Ms. Johnson, unless you correct me, I think that I want to ask you if we have any public comment on this item.
Yes, and we do not have any public comments this evening.
Do we have any commissions present on this item? So I guess we will go to Commissioner Schroll for a report and perhaps a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my report will be brief. As Mr. Lad and Mr. Lamb's presentation was very thorough. I don't have much to add beyond what the two of them have already covered. As Mr. Lamb indicated, we did consider this item at a joint LRPC ZOLO meeting on May 11. Our conversation was was pretty short. It probably set the record for shortest LRPC ZOLO meeting on record. LRPC members did indicate support for the proposed change, mainly because, as staff have indicated, there's no additional density coming out of this proposed change and that the, you know, that these changes are essentially relatively minor and do still keep with the intent of the Sector Plan objectives. And the only speaker we heard was from the applicant articulating its support for staff's proposed changes. So I think that concludes my present, my remarks this evening. I don't, I did not circulate really a discussion topic list, given the minor nature of these amendments. And I intend to move the county manager's recommended motions when the time is right. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. I think that the first hand that I see is Commissioner Morton, so welcome to you.
Thank you, Chair Weir. I just have a declaration that I'm obliged to make. For the record, I want to state that with regard to the subject of this agenda item, the revision of Map One in the Clarendon Revitalization District, I own property on Kirkwood Road, which is part of the Bromptons of Clarendon Development, a portion of which is across the street from this Red Top project. Along with all property owners immediately proximate to the project site, my property interests could be negatively or positively affected by the project. I've been advised that my property ownership constitutes a personal interest under the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, but that I may nonetheless participate in the consideration of the project because my personal interest may be affected by the project in the same way as all property owners immediately proximate to it. Because of this, I'm permitted to participate in the consideration of the project and can do so fairly objectively and in the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. Are there any other commissioners who wish to speak on this matter? Going once, going twice. Commissioner Schroll, I am going to go back to you then for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board adopt the attached ordinance to this staff report dated May 25, 2021, to amend, reenact, and recodify ACZO Section 9.2.5 to revise Map One in the Clarendon Revitalization District, Section 9.2, to replace the heights of 55 feet and 110 feet, and the arrows indicating a one-to-three taper plane with new maximum heights indicated at steps of 55, 75, and 95 feet for the property located at 3275 and 3251 Washington Boulevard and 1227 and 1239 North Ivy Street. RPC number 15-078-024-006-020-010-021-011-012, and those portions of county streets and street utility easements vacated pursuant to instrument number 20190100007836.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got multiple, but I want to get the actual names. Could you please identify yourselves?
Commissioner Patel.
Patel, thank you. But I think that I heard another name. I'll go with Commissioner Patel for the record. Thank you. Unless anyone wishes to further speak on the motion, I will call the roll. I believe that Commissioner Siegel and Peterson are also absent tonight. This is your chance while I go over to my notes to let me know otherwise.
Commissioner-
Commissioner Hughes. Oh, Commissioner Sarley, thank you.
I was trying to say Commissioner Sarley's on, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to iterate that I did attend the LRPC ZOLO meeting, and I felt that this change was maintaining the spirit of the guidelines, and this is why I will vote support.
Thank you. If no one else would like to be recognized at the moment, then I will start with Commissioner Steimerger. For votes, sorry.
I'm sorry, she'll be tardy this evening.
All right.
Yes.
So I'm listing her as, I'm not going to list her as absent. Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Guerin?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
And I will be voting aye as well. That is eight in favor, zero against. Commissioner Sarley, you still have your hand up. Is that residual?
Apologies.
Thank you. And so the main motion passes. I believe that that's the only motion before us on this item. Is that correct? Does anyone disagree?
That's correct, Mr. Schroll.
So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the second item?
Yes, item number five is a PDSP for number 346, Site Plan, 346 for a Site Plan Amendment, and the final site plan of 346. And this is for a portion of in Potomac Yard Land Base C. And we have Adam Watson to present this item from our planning staff this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Watson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Can you see my screen and hear me okay?
Yes and yes.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, this is the Potomac Yard Land Base C Site Plan Project and associated items. So this evening, we have first, we have three items. We have the Potomac Yard PDSP Amendment. This is to allow the conversion of approved office use to residential use and also to divide Land Base C into separate site plans. We have the Site Plan Amendment to the existing site plan for Land Base C to remove site area for the new site plan and also to establish again separate, separate site plans for East and West. And then lastly, we have Item C, which is the new site plan itself for development of Land Base C East. So this site is located within Potomac Yard Land Base C, which is shown on the map on the left-hand side of the screen. Land Base C is the last remaining undeveloped land bay in the Potomac Yard PDSP area. And this development proposal, again, is just for the eastern portion, which is shown on the right-hand side of the screen with a different orientation, but as you can see, today serves as a service parking lot area and a construction staging ground for the sir across the street. In terms of our general land use plan, this site, as well as the entirety of the Potomac Yard PDSP, is a striping, striped on the glup as medium residential uses on one-third of the site and low apartment, so low office, apartment, hotel on the remaining two-thirds. So again, for our purposes tonight, the the glup striping here does not set a maximum threshold for residential use, which is important when we consider the fact that this will be converting from office to residential use. The zoning for this site, as well as again, the entire Potomac Yard PDSP area, is CO 1.5 mixed-use district. There is no rezoning proposed for this site, and the existing zoning for the site does correspond with the existing glup designation. Moving in to talk a little bit about some of the background of the Potomac Yard PDSP and the, in the site plan that's already approved. For all of Land Base C, the PDSP was approved in 2000. It allowed for little over a million square feet of additional density across six land bays, land bays A through F, with the conveyance of the North Tract. It prescribed density and land use for each of these land bays, and envisioned Land Base C as an office campus with about a million square feet of office. It's been amended numerous times over the last 20 years, 21 years, particularly with with each approval of each final site plan as it's come in. And concurrently with the approval of the PDSP, the board adopted the Potomac Yard Design Guidelines to help guide development of the PDSP area. So the actual final site plan for, for this site, as well as the western parcel, was approved in 2007, has remained again unbuilt for these last 14 years, but did did include four office buildings with ground floor retail, which is shown on the plan on the right-hand side of the screen. And I've superimposed here in red just the the existing parcel boundaries to show you how East and West are divided. But again, that that approval also included underground parking garage as well as the North Park Plaza, which runs to the center of the site. So the proposed PDSP and Site Plan Amendments, these two tables just give you a quick summary or snapshot of what is proposed. Again, the key things here are that we are dividing Land Base C into East and West final site plans, which you can see shown in blue between the approved versus the proposed density tables here. And again, CE East would convert to predominantly residential use with some retail as well. The the key takeaway here is really at the bottom in terms of talking about the use mix. The use mix presently is about a 50/50 split of commercial to residential use, and the proposal would shift that balance to about a 40 to 60%. use mix presently is about a fifty fifty split of commercial to residential use and the proposal would shift that balance to about a forty to sixty percent ratio of commercial to residential use, which again is not inconsistent with the glup and is and is also does not conflict with the zoning. Jumping into the development proposal itself, again, this is a conversion of office use and we're going to be getting two residential buildings with ground floor retail totaling about four hundred and ninety-one dwelling units. There'll be underground parking beneath the site, which could go as low as point seven spaces per dwelling unit. I want to point out that the applicant is proposing currently a point eight eight parking space per dwelling unit ratio. However, should the half there's a there's a there's a half level of parking, a third level of of underground parking, which should the market conditions allow, could be eliminated and allow the the parking to go down to point seven spaces per unit, which staff supports. Retail parking is one space per three hundred, excuse me, six hundred and thirty-five square feet of retail and gross floor area. This project will bring with it implementation of North Park Plaza or the portion of North Park Plaza on the the east parcel. The project is proposing to go to lead gold, which is a great step up and sustainability over the existing approval, which is only for lead silver. And it would also bring implementation in terms of removing the landscape median on Potomac Avenue, which exists along the frontage of the site to allow for a future installation of a cycle tracker multi-use trail on the east side of Potomac Avenue. This is the proposed site layout for the two towers. You have a north building and a south building. The retail is shown in orange and the residential entry points are both located off of Potomac Avenue. We also have a garage, a single garage access point off of Twenty-Ninth Street, loading for the north building off of Twenty-Ninth Street and also again loading for the south building off of Thirty-Third Street. In addition, as I mentioned previously, it would implement North Park Plaza and also the applicant has proposed to grant to the county a public use access, excuse me, a public access easement for the North Park Plaza, which totals point six two acres. I would mention that the PDSP set forth a minimum of a half acre for the entirety of North Park Plaza, so this does exceed that. And it includes all natural materials as well as curb and organic shaped furnishings, trees and landscaping. Of course, lawn and seating areas and a water fountain which bisects the two buildings. And it also integrates with the existing or approved design for the Sea West parcel that's adjacent. In terms of building massing and height, the south building is eleven stories, which steps down to ten stories towards the center of the site. The north building is a maximum of fifteen stories, stepping down to fourteen stories and then to thirteen stories to the north adjacent to the Marriott Hotel on Land Bay B. I wanted to talk a little bit about how this project evolved in response to both staff and community comment throughout the SPRC process, highlighting some of the key areas of discussion that occurred throughout the community review process. And the first of these was had to do with the site layout. The original design, which is shown on the left-hand side of the screen, presented some potential safety issues or conflicts which were identified by staff and the community, which which really stemmed from the location of this loading area all along Potomac, which created a very wide apron and conflict point with not only pedestrians on the sidewalk, but also cyclists using the existing, the existing bike lane on Potomac Avenue, as you would have trucks making a reverse loading, reverse movement into the the building to accommodate loading. Working with the applicant, this the applicant was very responsive to staff's and community concerns on this matter. And they have put forth a revised design. This is again just showing the portion of the revised design to the north building, which relocated that and consolidated those loading docks onto Twenty-Ninth, which is a much more appropriate space and location. And also then provided an active and pedestrian oriented ground floor use with retail and an outdoor seating, private outdoor seating area fronting along Potomac Avenue, in addition to new street trees, which would otherwise be absent, given the need for the apron where the loading dock was located previously. So this is just to say that this revised design definitely aligns with the Potomac Yard Design Guidelines and and really is a step in the right direction in terms of providing a pedestrian oriented design that has active uses fronting on Potomac Avenue. Another key area of discussion throughout this project was North Park Plaza itself and in particular efforts to green it and to add biophilic elements and incorporate biophilic design into the landscape plan. And this, these two images here at the top of the screen, I think, illustrate the applicant's responsiveness to this. Again, this this plaza was envisioned by the design guidelines and the PDSP to be a predominantly hardscaped plaza that served retail. And I think what we have now is something that still keeps that vision, but moves much more, aligns most more closely with more recently adopted county efforts and policies to increase the tree canopy and to improve biophilic design. And the applicant clearly from this, from these images, as you can see, has has increased, decreased the amount of pervious area, impervious area, and also added a number of trees and plantings. In terms of transportation, this site is very well supported by multimodal transportation. It has a metroway stop, which is located on the adjacent Land Bay Bike Share Stations located throughout the Potomac Yard Development and just generally excellent connectivity to the local and regional roadway network. Touching on our community engagement process, which we began last year in December of two thousand and twenty, we had one online engagement for this, for SPRC, which set the agenda for our following two virtual SPRC meetings, where we discussed most of the items that I just mentioned on the previous slides. In terms of commissions, this did go as an informational item to the Parks and Recreation Commission last week, which was supportive overall of the project, however, did put forth an interest, I would say, in incorporating, if possible, bird-friendly materials into the design of the building. This also went to the Transportation Commission. The TC voted unanimously to approve these items per the county manager's recommendation, with one amendment to allow for protected bike lanes on Potomac Avenue if if the county's efforts for a cycle tracker multi-use trail are not implemented or completed concurrently with the development of the project. And staff is developing a formal response to this, but the answer is that this can be accommodated and we've been coordinating with the applicant to make sure this can happen. And it it can basically be accommodated through post-approval plan submissions. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on that later on. And then lastly, I wanted to note that we will be going to the county board on next Tuesday. This item we we did here today will be heard at the recessed county board meeting, so I just wanted to flag that at the bottom for everyone's awareness. In terms of conditions and work, there is one condition that I did want to highlight to the commission, which has to do with the the water feature, the fountain, that's a portion, a part of the North Park Plaza. The applicant has has requested that if there's issues there, post-approval, but during permitting for this, for this water fountain, that there be some flexibility in terms of perhaps changing out the fountain for a feature of equal or greater quality, which staff does support. And the applicant has also agreed that this would not purely be, you know, just an administrative approval, but would also participate in a public engagement meeting to discuss any potential alternative design for that fountain prior to submitting plans for the final landscaping and engineering plans moving forward. So I did just want to highlight that one condition, which we're, which we're still just tweaking and is a, again, a non-standard condition. So staff's recommendation is to approve all of these items per the county manager's recommendation. We feel that this proposal is consistent with the zoning ordinance and the glup and definitely advances a number of key goals from the PDSP, which includes creating an urban mixed-use and transit-oriented development, implementing development of North Park Plaza, enhancing multimodal access and connectivity and advancing sustainable building design. And that concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I believe we will then go to the applicant next.
Good evening. Hopefully everybody can see and hear me. Nicholas Cummings here with Walsh Palucci on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to be giving a brief introduction. The Potomac Yard PDSP first approved over twenty years ago has filled out over the past two decades with a number of different projects. The only remaining undeveloped land bay is Land Bay C, originally envisioned as a single office development that could serve as a corporate headquarters. Over the years, as market forces changed and new office developments were proposed further north in Arlington, the viability of the entire land bay as an office development declined. Meridian, the contract seller of the property diligently pursued potential tenants for years without success. The applicant and purchaser, Zom, took this opportunity to redesign the eastern half of the development with two striking and modern residential buildings framing the planned North Park Plaza. The project meets the original goals of the PDSP by contributing to the mixed-use environment in Potomac Yard, building out pedestrian and bicycle connections and constructing half of North Park Plaza. It exceeds those goals, however, with a commitment to lead gold certified construction, biophilic design, and modern architecture. Now, while the western portion of the land bay will remain undeveloped until its present owner, Lidl, moves forward with a project, the applicant is also committed to temporary sidewalks to provide connectivity around the undeveloped parcel and has presented a full coordinated vision for North Park Plaza that could be achieved when Lidl goes forward. So with that, I'll turn our presentation over to, over to the design team with, I believe, Mr. John Gaetle or Tom Kerwin from BKAL.
Hi, hello. My name is Tom Kerwin. I'm the founding crystal of BKAL Architecture and I'm very pleased to be presenting Hazel National Landing tonight on behalf of the entire project design team for our client, Zom. Our Land Bay Sea East is contained within the national landing area of Potomac Yard. Our site is indicated in red on the image on the right side of the page as Mr. Watson went through with you. Our proposed project is approximately five hundred and twenty-six thousand gross square feet with four hundred and ninety-one residential units, four hundred and forty-five vehicular parking spaces, and two hundred and twenty bicycle parking spaces. Building one to the north is fifteen floors and three hundred and two units. Building two to the south is eleven floors and one hundred and eighty-nine units. This slide on the left depicts on the left the prior site plan approval from December two thousand and seven as Mr. Watson went through as an office use. And our current proposal on the right comprised of multifamily housing and retail uses. This slide depicts the site plan for our project. Please note that north is to the left on this page and all plans, future plans in this presentation will have north to the left. As Mr. Watson went through, our site is bounded by Potomac on the, to the east, Twenty-Ninth Street to the north, Thirty-Third Street to the south. And it is bounded by the Center Park Green Space to the west. And the two buildings outlined below are the buildings Mr. Watson referred to as Lidl properties below, not part of our project. The slide depicts the roof plan and boundary line for Land Bay Sea East. We're very excited about the amount of green and open space provided for in our plan at ground level and in addition to the green space provided at the upper levels of our project. And we will present the more detailed landscape plan later in this presentation. This slide depicts the ground floor of our project, which Mr. Watson went through. We worked very closely with staff and and SPRC chairs and co-chairs to rework this plan. Were several factors with the retail at the corners along Potomac and the relocation of the loading docks as Mr. Watson went through, the residential entries flank the center passageway, townhomes at grade face west and front the Center Park. The service access on the original plan was actually located in the passageway. So we feel very good about the the work we've done with our client and with the planning staff and commissioners to make that center passageway what we believe was intended to be in the beginning, a great public space linking Potomac Avenue and the Center Park. This slide depicts the typical residential floor plan. The units are comprised primarily of studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units and with slightly more generous unit sizes for building two, which is the building on the right. You'll see in this plan that a significant number of the units will have access to outdoor balcony space. These diagrams reveal the composition of the buildings in keeping with the Potomac Yard Design Guidelines, which outline methodologies for breaking down long facades along major streets like Potomac Avenue. This is further enhanced by the passageway between the two buildings. As you know, this passageway was called for in the original site plan, and again, we believe we've strengthened it and made it a more vibrant urban space with the changes we've made. This slide and the next series of images will describe the overall composition and massing of our project. Detailed drawings will follow depicting the exterior look and feel. The massing is composed of a series of five volumes that are modulated in both plan and section and are further enhanced by the passageway and break, the breaking of the two buildings. The three blocks, two at the ends and one in the middle, are composed primarily of brick. These blocks are composed of earth tone colors that are seen in the district, buffs and reds and rust colors. The blocks between the volumes, between the brick volumes are primarily composed of metal, which affords us the opportunity to provide more vibrant colors. In our practice, we see color as an important aspect of our projects to help enrich people's lives and create more vibrant, vibrant urban experiences. Again, our design is composed predominantly of brick, as called for in the Potomac Yard Guidelines. Brick provides many opportunities for richness of detail, the modulation, the joinery, the ability to provide depth and resulting shade and shadow all bring a facade to life. Sustainability is an important aspect of our plan, in particular, the two blocks between the masonry volumes, which contain linear balconies, which serve as outdoor space for the residents, but also serve to provide sun shading along these long east-west facades. This is a view from Potomac looking down through the passageway and also depicts the residential, residential entries that flank this passageway on either side. The pedestrian activity generated by the entries here will further serve to provide vibrancy for for this outdoor open space. This slide depicts the view of the passageway between the buildings, again, looking west towards the Center Park. LSG, our landscape consultant, will go into further detail in this space later in the presentation. This slide depicts building one entry from Potomac Avenue looking west. As you can see, we've set back the lobby glass to create a datum and a base which grounds the project, grounds the building, but also provides for covered space outside while one waits for their guests or gets cover from the rain, waiting for their transportation, et cetera. This is another view along Potomac of the area Mr. Watson spoke about where we relocated a service area that we had proposed here originally, with their input relocated to Twenty-Ninth Street. And we're creating a semi-enclosed structure that will provide some cover and enclosure for outdoor dining at this location along Potomac. This is the same area, a similar view, but an aerial view describing more clearly, we hope. This is a trellis-like structure that connects the two brick volumes across Potomac and brings the outdoor seating to the sidewalk edge and provides life and further enhancing the pedestrian experience. Walking around the building, this is a slide from the north looking south. On the west end of the building, again, depicting the datum that occurs at the base of the building that grounds the building. It also starts to demonstrate the richness of materials we intend to provide in brick and metal and glass. This image shows a view of the townhomes fronting the Center Park. The townhomes will have a semi-private area at their front doors and also clearly marked entries for each unit. These are two-story townhomes and the window treatments will be provided such that residents can raise their blinds from the bottom to the top, providing for privacy, but still allowing for natural light within their units. This image also depicts more clearly the linear balconies and and the metal cladding above the townhomes, which will again provide for outdoor space for the residents and also sun shading for the units. This is another oblique view of those townhomes that face the Center Park, showing their entries and the grounding of the building with active uses. It also depicts the the vibrancy of materials that come together at the juncture of the brick and metal facades. This is a view of the entrance to building two along Potomac. Again, you see linear balconies, which also provide cover at this entrance to this building. And this is a view from Potomac looking at the retail area at the corner of Potomac and Thirty-Third. Again, you'll see the massing and exterior glazing moves that serve to ground the building at the pedestrian scale and the richness of the brick above is exciting for its characteristics of warmth and and texture and depth. This is a view looking north from Thirty-Third Street, the covered area on this south and west corner. The covered area on this south and west corner provides for a larger outdoor gathering space for one to take respite from the hot sun on a summer day or from a rain, from the rain on a rainy day. This space will be generous in volume, resulting in pleasing proportions for the users. And this is a view from within that covered outdoor space. The southwest corner of the building looking north, the space will provide for shade and cover on a rainy day, both for the public using the Center Park, but in addition to the residents that will have access to coworking space that occurs on the interior on the right side of this page. This is a view from the Center Park looking back at the townhomes on the west side for building two. We believe we've struck the proper balance for, with, by providing active uses at the ground floor with townhomes, but also allowing for the proper amount of privacy and discreet entries for the townhome residents. I will now turn this over to L S G and Amal to talk about the landscape plan. Amal, if you're speaking, sir, you're on mute.
All right, I'll be the second person. Thank you, Tom, and good evening to Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners on this call. My name is Amul Deshpande. I'm with Alishi Landscape Architecture, and I'm excited to be here talking about Hazel National Landing. I believe that our design team and client, we have worked with the county staff to create a design to transform this site into a unique outdoor environment that is smart, sustainable, and creative. There are basically four components to this outdoor placemaking on this project. First, the streetscape along the three sides of the site, the North Park Plaza, the central passageway that Tom talked about, the rooftop amenities on the building one and two. This evening, I will, however, focus mainly on the public areas that you see in this plan. The design of the streetscape areas is pretty much consistent with Roslyn-Boston corridor streetscape standards, as well as the Arlington County landscape standards. Overall design of the North Park Plaza itself is in keeping with the intent of the previously approved P D S P. The design language speaks to the dynamic architecture and helps to integrate our design with the parcel C West, which will happen sometime in future, but we are thinking about it even right now as, you know, envisioned in P D S P. The main focus of the central passageway is the water feature element that Tom showed the perspective of. It takes the advantage of the natural grade change and it cascades down to greet and welcome people along the Potomac Avenue. The various other elements of the North Park Plaza that I will discuss on the following slides. There's the central seating element that you see there, the long panel and the stepped seating areas, the linear seating element along the western boundary, the catenary lighting, and many other things that I'll point out. The next slide, please. These are some of the reference images that I'll talk about through the next slides, that they speak about the cascading effect of the water feature that we are envisioning. That's sort of, and also the relaxing custom seating elements that we are envisioning throughout the project. Next slide, please. This one shows the North Park Plaza looking towards the Thirty-Third Street. The design offers variety of spaces and experiences for socialization, play, contemplation, et cetera. The spacious sculptural design of the bench invites passersby to sit, lounge, and take a break. It also acts as a stage for seasonally appropriate installations, art installations, events, smaller performances, gatherings, and in conjunction with the stepped seating that you see in the distance along with the long panel there. The long panel itself acts as an informal space for socialization, exercise, the envision Tai Chi or yoga, play, and relaxation. Next slide, please.
This is the final slide of our presentation, and we very much appreciate your time and consideration of this project. We wish to thank the Arlington planning staff and the commissioners that have engaged in a series of meetings with us throughout this process. In particular, the S P R C Chair and Co-Chair Commissioner Hughes and Sarley for their valuable input and for Mr. Watson for helping us shepherd this through the process. We believe that the project has been made better through this process and will result in a project that will only contribute positively to this urban environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Ms. Johnson, do we have any public speakers on this item?
No, we do not this evening, but we will have requests to speak from the Chair for P R C, David Howell.
Right. And do we have, are there any other, I saw a, I saw a comment in the chat about another individual, although, wait. I'm, it's, so it's just Mr. Howell then for the, for commissions?
Yes.
Okay, well, Mr. Howell will go to you.
And thank you very much. I think you have our letter that we sent to the board. I won't repeat it too much, but I do want to highlight a couple of things. First of all, I think we all think this is a fantastic project. It's, the architecture is great, the siding is, is very good, it has a lot of interest. I think it will just by nature be act, people will want to be outside in the open space around. There's just an awful lot good to say about it. We only have two areas where I think we have some comments, and I've made some before. I think probably the applicant is familiar with these themes. And, and one is about the arcade and the water feature. And I would just say that I welcome the, the interest in having additional conversations with staff about how to manage that, given that there are complexities, perhaps logistical, but maybe also in terms of permitting. When you build something that looks like a swimming pool, you may have some, you may have some liability issues. But on the biophilic side, you can do a lot of mitigating of those concerns by just making it physically inaccessible with vegetation and contours and, and natural stream boulders and things like that. So i- if there's any opportunity to sort of rethink a little bit about that and also maintain consistency with the overall site architecture, I think that would be a great solution. I understand the interest in, in keeping that arcade harmonious with the, with the buildings, and the buildings are great. So there's that. So the last point that I have is, again, about bird-friendly windows. I'm not using the term bird-safe because they're not the same thing. Bird-safe really means virtually no risk. Bird-friendly is just trying to find different ways, and there are a ton of them, different ways to mitigate the fatal strikes that we are inevitable whenever you have vegetation and birds, particularly during the four months of the year that, where you have heavy migration north and south. And right, you know, being right there by the, by the river, that enhances the vulnerability really for all, everything from Roslyn down to, to Crystal City. So we are interested in, in continuing to request that this be looked at and try to find ways that meet the budget, but also limit the, the number of fatal bird strikes in the areas that are most dangerous. And in the letter, we highlighted the three areas that seem to be most problematic, and one is the larger windows at the ends of the building. Window matter, window size matters. Certainly, it's not, you know, a glass arena, but on the other hand, all, all glass has the potential to be, to be dangerous. And, you know, a lot of factors are in play. Nobody has data to say something is totally safe or something is totally unsafe, but it amounts to reflectivity indexes, it amounts to what's the background and what would be reflected and lighting and inside and out and, and a variety of other things, angles. And one window will work differently at different times of the day. So it's really a matter of just doing some, you know, research and your best guess about how you can reduce the danger. In the last thirty years, forty years, we've got twenty-five percent reduction in songbird population in the United States. This is partly about habitat loss, it's partly about outdoor cats, believe it or not, but a lot of it has to do with the rapid increase in the use of glasses and exterior building material. And we are, in the D C area, we are number nine in the nation in terms of most dangerous in the fall migration because the spring and the fall migrations work a little differently because of prevailing winds and other things. But, you know, on any given night, you can have three, four hundred million birds in flight over the eastern part of the United States. And on the way back, that includes all of the broods that hatched in the breeding areas over the summer and are basically leaving home for the first time. So not to be melodramatic, but there, the proportion of inexperienced flyers is much higher in the fall migration. So, so the first one was the windows on, on the end portions, which are a little bit larger, and also have some places where you actually have glass corners, which has a see-through issue. The second category is the proverbial, you know, ground level, the top, the bottom thirty feet. You know, San Francisco now requires everything below five stories, five stories and below to be bird-friendly. Dallas, Houston, and Chicago all have provisions now for this because the center part of the United States is the main spring migration path. And so we now have a building with great trees and great living space all around, but all of that creates in the bottom thirty feet, an awful lot of proximity and reflection of trees and a lot of larger pieces of glass, including the townhomes that we saw, which would be fantastic to live in. But there, those are pretty big pains there. So architecturally, you could do this because of the variation in the facade, you could do this without having any real disruption in appearance. You've got a lot of variety of appearance in different parts, anyway. The, the last area, and I, I never could find anything to, to indicate exactly what the center portion of building one is, maybe someone can just tell me. They were steps down from fifteen to fourteen feet, and there's a structural framing of that section, which appeared in a couple of images to be glass, as if it were a wind barrier to some potential use for the roof. And I don't know whether that is or whether it's just open, but if it's glass, that would also be a big vulnerability. So, yeah, I, I think that if we could work on that, this is something that's emerging, and I know that you had conversation about this last night. I think Arlington does need to give some additional tools. If you can't pass an amendment on a project, maybe you could just ask the board for some additional tools so that you can have a better shot at managing these recommendations. We really need to take care of this issue. We, we strive in Arlington to be progressive and on the cutting edge of all kinds of planning things, but there are plenty of cities that are way ahead of us now on this issue, so, including Baltimore. So with that, I'll let it go, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lentelme, as we know, is not here this evening, but is our liaison to the Transportation Commission and reported that this was considered at the, well, before I read what he sent me, I, I'll just confirm. Are there any other commissions that are here and wish to, to present or speak? Okay, so, continue. Commissioner Laitama reports that this item was considered at the May twenty-seventh Transportation Commission hearing or meeting, and the county manager's recommendation was approved unanimously with an amendment supporting an interim southbound protected bike lane on Potomac Avenue. The discussion noted a number of transportation improvements over the course of the S P R C process, excuse me, such as the road diet and bicycle facilities on Potomac Avenue, the relocation of loading bays, reconfiguring, reconfiguration of some sidewalks, and interim improvements of sidewalks to the west of the site. With that said, I will go to Commissioner Hughes for the S P R C report.
Good evening, Commissioner Weir, my fellow commissioners. And I don't, I don't want to belabor the, the time, so I will be brief. I sent you all an outline just before the meeting with respect to how I hope we can have our conversation structured this evening. I will say that staff and the applicants so far have, have done a great job of presenting the entire process and have deliberately done it. I do just want to remind folks, I can't belabor the point that this is a, an amendment to an existing approved P D S P site plan, which was office and is now being done to a residential conversion. So we have to review it through that lens in that respect. And further, I also want to add to the conversation that the only regret I have is, this is the first time, I think, since we started virtual meetings, I am really sad to have been doing this virtually. For my fellow commissioners, I think we are all missing out on one, seeing the material board on this. The colors that the team of B K L and Zom have presented in these two metal-clad buildings are going to be dramatic and different and be just a amazing part of our visual landscape as one arrives into National Airport. And so I, I just think that we, we have a great building here to look at. We talked about it last night, the gateway to Roslyn, but so many people arrive to Arlington first on a plane right into National. So it allows them to really see entirely different than the brutalism that is most of Crystal City in their landing. With that said, Commissioner Weir, I do want to just, to my fellow commissioners, I think if we structure our, our conversation around the three main areas this evening, site transportation, questions revolving around that subject should be directed in that time period. Then moving on to the pedestrian realm, really focusing on the, the experience of mostly the person as they walk through and experience the site. And then finally, the building's footprint, laying out, of course, how the heights, materials, fenestrations, bird-friendly glass, of course, here, community benefits and other items to be identified there. So Commissioner Weir, I will let us get straight into our conversation. But again, I really do want to highlight to my commissioners, if you get a chance to really look in there and see what that material is looking like, this is not hardy board painted, this is a really, really cool material, I think, that we are going to be able to see here in Arlington. And I do also, before I join Commissioner Weir, I want to first say, or last say, that Zom is new to Arlington, I think I've highlighted this. And as a commissioner, as Adam, our staffer, Mr. Watson, laid out, has been exceptionally accommodating and responsive to, to criticism. They brought us beautiful buildings at the beginning of this process and heard the criticism of, of a beautiful baby, and it made it even better with what they brought forward. And I think Mr. Watson's showing us the slides demonstrated that. So Commissioner Weir, I will yield the floor to you, and hopefully we'll have some poignant questions from my fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. So I have, just to reiterate, I have site transportation, I have the pedestrian realm and the building footprint, which proposing also include things like fenestration, bird-friendly glass, et cetera.
The goal in the outline, Commissioner Weir.
Please, I lost you, Commissioner Hughes. I think you're on mute. Still on mute. Did your, did the wand go up too far? Your, your mute icon went away.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, I'm number three for this evening. It wouldn't be a team's meeting without some technical difficulties. My goal in in the sub-bullets for my fellow commissioners, not for each item to be discussed if there's no questions, but instead to help my commissioners sort of bring out the conversation in three broad realms to bring the questions that I think will be complementary to each other within each zone.
Thank you. So we have a three item outline. Is there anyone who would like to add any other general discussion topics before we proceed? And I I should point out that just perhaps for the record that that the discussion is with the commission now and and so I'll reiterate my question, whether or not anyone has any items that they'd like to add to that discussion. I suppose then we start with site transportation. Are there any topics or questions on site or or comments on site transportation? Anything on the pedestrian realm? Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little slow on the raising my hand there for site transportation, if you'll still entertain a question.
We should absolutely still talk about site transportation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a question and two questions for staff. Or I guess one question for staff and one for the applicant. So Mr. Watson or Ms. Gabor, for the lower parking ratio here, which we can, which the comes back or it can be considered administratively, sorry. And looking at the at the conditions, it sets it at a point seven, not the point eight eight. So I'm wondering sort of why, if it was going to be dealt with administratively, kind of why it wasn't done in the reverse? If you could sort of walk me through that, like, why we didn't set it at the point eight eight with the option to go down to a lower ratio. It looks like Mr. Gibson also has.
Mister Mister Gibson is here. I was just gonna say, you know, that's a that's a minimum, so they could do more than that. If they want to do point eighty, that's what's proposed, but I'll let Mr. Gibson respond.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. You're exactly correct. These site line conditions establish the minimum at point zero, at at zero point seven. They could go down to that without having a county board amendment and do that administratively. That's roughly one half level of garage. And if they wanted to go down further, we'd recommend it come back to the county board for further discussion as the point, as the point seven ratio is consistent with the guidance in the residential parking reduction guidelines.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gibson and Mr. Watson. So wondering, I don't know. Given that it's consistent with the the point sevens consistent with the guidance, administrative guidance, why we're not just sort of letting a point seven go? And why we're why it would have to be considered later at all?
I am happy to 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 expand on that. So it wouldn't really need to be considered later. I think what the condition does is, again, it just sets a minimum. If at the time of the final CEP submission, the applicant decides that the market allows for a point seven amount of parking space, which would which would be a reduction of that half level of parking that the Mr. Gibson just referenced, then they simply would not need to submit plans for that that portion of the garage is is basically my understanding. And Mr. Gibson, if you have anything you want to add to that, please feel free. It's it's it. I describe it as being administrative, but the whole process is administrative. Anyway, it's it's just it allows them to go down to that to that minimum amount without how actually the the reverse would actually be more complicated if we set it at point eight, and then they had to come back to ask to go down lower. So maybe that's a better way of framing it.
That that makes that makes sense.
And what it is an administrative process in the sense that they would have to submit revised plans and tabulations to the zoning administrator and building code and all that sort of thing. But it is not something that would require any further county board action.
Great, thank you. And then a question for the applicant. Well, let me just wrap up that. I'm glad you're considering something below a one point to like one and one eighth. So hopefully you can get down to a point seven. Question for the applicant on EV charging. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you or your team could speak to what the EV parking would, you know, infrastructure, what's what's being provided here?
Sure, I think I'll call on Mr. Tom Kerwin or his colleagues at B K L to answer that.
Yeah, I'm gonna call on my colleagues to give me those exact numbers. John Winter or John Gage, can you provide that?
This is John Winter. Yes, we're providing six EV charging spaces initially with the ability to expand to a total of twelve EV charging spaces in the future.
All right. Thanks for that information. And so when you say expand, you have the capacity to to expand to the additional spaces. Will you be running conduit to others? Are the other spaces EV ready? Or is is that all the EV infrastructure you're providing?
We'll run conduit. We won't actually provide the chargers.
Okay, so to confirm that the rest of the spaces you have are EV ready, correct?
There's six that will be EV EV capable from the outset. They will have chargers. Six additional that will, we have the ability to add chargers.
And the rest are capable, is what you're saying? Okay. As you all probably well know, yeah, the to the extent you can add that capacity there, that's going to be the big cost, since you already are going to make the rest, yeah, you capable, which is great. You're certainly saving costs there. So thanks for that. Yeah, appreciate the the feedback.
I I'm sorry, this is Tom Kerwin. I just want to be completely clear on this matter. That as I understand it, there are six EV charging stations provided with the actual infrastructure to charge. There are going to be six additional stations that will have the conduit brought to those and chargers can be added later. Correct, John Winter?
That is correct.
So you're not, so you're not running additional conduit beyond that, is what you're saying?
That is, we are not.
Okay, so it's about six times more expensive to to install stations, you know, charging and infrastructure after the fact than installing it at the time of construction. I know that, you know, you're trying to figure out the cost of this and maybe the current EV demand isn't there. We are you know, five, six years away from EVs being at cost parity with ICE vehicles. So, you know, this is going to be upon us soon. And so would encourage the applicant to be thinking about what steps you can take to allays some of those costs, make you sure your building is cost competitive in the future on on some of these key issues. Knowing that that's only a few years away and this building is going to be here for a while. Certainly recognizing that you can do some on kind of smart charging, other things, you don't have to provide all the capacity for all your spaces, but certainly want to hope that you can put yourself in the best position to to address this kind of forthcoming issue. Thanks.
Anyone else want to, anyone else in the commission have anything on transportation before we move on to pedestrian realm? Thank you, Commissioner Schroll for covering those items. We'll drag in with the pedestrian realm. I'll give it a moment. And then do we have anything from anyone on the various building footprint related items? Such as fenestration or bird-friendly glass or related items. I have a couple of hands. I'll go with Commissioner Guren first.
Thank you, Chairman Weir. And I first want to align myself with other comments. I'm very excited with this proposal and with the process and the applicant's engagement with the community. And thank you for bringing this to Arlington. My comments go to the bird-friendly glass, rather really to the birds. Every year in the US alone, approximately one billion birds are involved in collisions with glass on buildings. And this is what's called a bird strike. Birds are attracted to the lighting, they're attracted to the vegetation in front of the buildings, and they're attracted to large glassy expanses. They just can't distinguish that glass is a substance. And so this impacts birds flying and birds fly at all different heights. It really depends somewhat on their food sources. But they'll definitely be attracted to vegetation and to reflective glass. And many birds use the Potomac River as a migratory flyway. So we see lots of birds in our area year round, but also many, many others who pass through Arlington on their migrations in the fall and in the spring. We can address this. You heard from Commissioner Howell that other jurisdictions across the US and indeed across the world are seeing this as a serious issue. There are simple ways to mitigate against bird strikes. You can put up exterior screens, you could put netting on windows. You can lessen the amount of unbroken big glass expanses. You can pattern glass so that it's visible to birds and they see it as something solid. I hope that this additional knowledge helps us all understand how carefully we need to look at the design of our buildings to ensure bird safety. And I hope that the applicant in providing such a beautiful building, beautiful development that will exist for many years, that you will continue to monitor this and look at mitigations in the future if it turns out that this is an issue going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Guren. Next is Commissioner Bagley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to align myself with Commissioner Guren's comments, and I certainly couldn't say as eloquently as and informably as she did. However, as exciting as this project is, it is disappointing that there isn't any sort of thought or is described in the PRC letter that we all received, that, oh, it's nothing, brush it off, it won't happen. This is this, as I had mentioned last night, it is an issue that I believe PRC is in the know on this topic. And when we get recommendations from that, I think it's important that we push them forward, whether I agree that, you know, there are a lot of things that are asked of developers, a lot of things that we ask of developers when they come. But to settle for nothing on the bird, I think that's, it's just, we have to further this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagley. Commissioner Morton.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. I just wanted to align myself with Commissioner Hughes's comments. I participated in SPRC and I joined him in commending the applicant for coming in with a really strong vision, both in terms of the architecture and in the urban design, which largely complied with the planning guidance, but really willing to engage in a thoughtful discussion, I thought, with SPRC members revising some aspects of the building that were really significant and others that were subtle, but but important with respect to things like lighting and the shades that I think overall will result in better contributions to the public realm and pedestrian experience. So kudos to the applicant and staff and to the chair and co-chair of this project. I do hope I I join Commissioner Guren and Bagley and hoping for additional guidance and policies about the bird-friendly glass as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. I am going to go to Commissioner Hughes.
Thanks, Commissioner Weir. I did want to, first of all, say to my fellow commissioners, I I think that continuing to bring the issue up is the only way to to change our county's policies. And I I do also hope not to build a building that becomes a bird-strike building. And more importantly, tilting against windmills is something this commissioner has done many a time. So it does take a while sometimes to get even a marginal movement. To that question, though, Commissioner Howell did ask, and I do want to be clear in the public realm meeting, if we would, Commissioner, we're having the applicant clarify the materiality of the fourteen-story buildings. I always, you always get my my architecture words wrong. But the crown on the building, for lack of a better way of doing it, if you would, Commissioner Weir.
Yeah. And so Commissioners Arley, unless you have any pressing objection, I think that I want to go to the applicant then.
No, I don't have any objection.
This is Tom Kerwin again with B K L Architecture, the architect for the project. The screen wall that occurs in that block that that was referenced earlier is is open air. There's no glazing in that area. You're right, if that was, it did have blazing, that would be a very particular concern for birds. But it is intended to be a frame, a screen that shields mechanical space and also gives height to that center block. I'd also like to take the opportunity to just acknowledge that the bird issue is a serious issue. I happen to practice in Chicago, live in Chicago, and you all are absolutely right. Chicago is also on bird migratory paths. The I believe, and not not to say that there aren't areas that can be improved, but I do believe that our building is very responsive to the issue. The biggest issue with with bird safety is large expanses of glass uninterrupted, very highly reflective, where birds cannot distinguish whether the trees reflecting in the glass or the clouds reflecting the glass are actually there or not there. So the the basic frame, structure, fenestration, materiality of our building provides provides for a lack of large expanses of glass. Now, the counter argument to that is that birds only see a very small area. So even a smaller area of glass can be disruptive, but there are the realities of of residents and 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 views out, but the basic tenant of our design, we believe, is very friendly to birds. If there are particular areas, which there was a letter referenced earlier, which we need to review, we're happy to do so. But I I didn't want to put forth that we're not, that we're that we're, we don't take the issue seriously because we do.
And thank you, Tom. And and we appreciate your comments, and I know that that was brought up in our SPRC meetings. And Commissioner Weir, I I too think that, you know, we we do have a broader conversation we have to have on that subject and where our priorities lie within our community. And we would always look forward to our hearing from our our building community who have built and build buildings, what we feel. So appreciate it. And check your mics, and I believe Commissioner Sarley's up. Thank you, Commissioner Weir.
Yes, Commissioner Sarley, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think I'll just make a quick comment on the bird thing. I think it behooves us to keep talking about this. I think both the applicant and any project, you know, is not interested in having sort of carcasses of birds, sort of, you know, littering the sidewalk or, you know, rooftop gardens or whatever. So I think ultimately, I think we can push on this a little bit and sort of have a good conversation about it going forward, and I think it's mutually beneficial. I wanted to turn to the sort of architecture a little bit more generally and also to incorporate a few comments on the process and how through the responsiveness of this applicant, we ended up with a product that was both respectful of the original design intent, which is really important, that notion of continuity and sort of conversation between the different elements of the of the site and good urban design, which relates to the neighborhood, anchoring the corners, you know, that face. I think one of the concepts to remember on urban design is it really isn't interested in creativity. It's very formulaic, and formulaic is good. And so when we, when we're in an urban context, not in a landscape context, the the formulas of holding the street edge, of having that space be sort of predetermined, you know, takes you back to things like Paris, where the sidewalks and the consistency and the repetition become actually sense of comfort. Not that this project is repetitive, but it it has a real understanding and to put it in jargon, perhaps for the the lawyers in our group, it's sort of like. It's sort of like if on the third paragraph, you switched to Portuguese, it's jarring and confusing. So I think what I appreciate about this project is it has five distinct buildings. Which are actually two buildings, but they read as five. They have really good proportion and relationship with each other. They relate well with to the neighbors. Because of its sort of architectural language. It's slightly different style, but it is on the same language. And and it's consistent and 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 also the focus on the original intent. So there aren't like jagged edges and spiraling. Sort of moves elsewhere and then, you know, soft edges here. It it. And a little bit of that is to create just this idea of unity. It's, you know, think of harmony, right? Like if you're if you're playing on the on a certain octave. You have to stick to that. Otherwise, it just becomes jarring. Unless it's intentional, you know, the Louvre and the pyramid, but that's because by the time the pyramid went on, the language of architecture had changed enough that people now understood. The pyramid, a glass pyramid in the middle of a very traditional, whereas if it had happened in the 1600s, it would have been just confusing and ill received. The the other thing is the the notion of sort of good architecture happening as it relates to context, follows the narrative that it set out to do. The materials and the rhythm relate to each other well. And in this case, it the playfulness of color also adds a certain joy to it. And then ultimately, I think the the fact that it followed the plan. You know, again, because the the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. If if this project fits within the plan, it is inherently better, right? On design principles, one of the things they talk about is how by definition, designed by committee actually does end up being better because if it achieves the goals that it set out to do, which in this case it did. Through the plan, it's a good thing. So I just really, really appreciate this project. Because the applicant staff, you know, and the commission has all sort of gotten on the same page and said, yes, we have a plan. We're going to work to the plan. We're going to present good architecture. It's exciting. It's fun. And it still sort of has that level of comfort that we can all relate to. So I it's just it's just kudos. And, you know, I think other commissioners have spoken to this relative to the architecture and the process, but I just really want to iterate that this was a great process because. Of everyone's sort of positive participation and input. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. Are there any other? Commissioners who wish to be recognized or to speak on? Any on on any of this or any other topic for this item? If not, I believe that Commissioner Hughes, I will go to you for a motion.
All right. So before we begin with the motion making process, I want to remind my fellow colleagues how we're going to do it this evening. There are three separate motions that we'll go through this evening. So the first motion that will go through this evening will be to incorporate and revise the PDSP and allow for the office to residential conversion. Second motion we'll go through will remove the site area from the existing approved site plan. And the third motion we go through will actually adopt and build the final motion that builds this building. So if you have any amendments that you wish to move, that would be during the third motion would be the most likely one you'd want to move through those. So with that, Commissioner Ware, I'll go ahead and begin. I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the attached ordinance to amend the phased development site plan PDSP number 346. To allow the conversion of office use to residential use on the eastern parcel of Potomac Yard land base C, Divide Land Base C. And other related condition revisions located on certain parcels of land known as Potomac Yard RPC number 34 dash 27 dash 60, 61, 62, 63, 67, 68, 71, 72, 73. Through 545, 549, 551, 553, 557, 558, 559, 560, 562, 563, 564, 566, 567, 568, 569, 570, 572, 573, 574, and 575. With modifications of the zoning ordinance requirements, including modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development plan, subject to all previously approved conditions and revised. Condition number four, six, and 22.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley.
I appreciate that, Mr. Sarley. I didn't want to reread that again.
So this is the first, this is as Commissioner Hughes noted, this is the first of the recommended motions. Are there Commissioner Hughes, do you wish to speak any further to the to the motion?
Nothing further than what I previously said, Commissioner Ware. It's self evident.
Yep. And I agree. Are there any other commissioners who wish to speak on this item before I call the vote? I am going to call the vote then, starting with Commissioner Steinberger, if present. I will go then to Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Guerin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
I will vote aye as well. The motion carries eight to zero. Commissioner Hughes, I will go back to you then, anticipating that you have another motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware. And again, this second motion will now remove the site area from the existing approved site plan. I move that the planning commission recommend the county board adopt the attached ordinance to amend the final site plan for land base C SP number 346 to remove 88,418 square feet of site area. Located on certain parcels of land known as Potomac Yard land base C RPC number 34 dash 27 dash 71 and 72. With modifications of the zoning ordinance requirements, including modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development plan, subject to all previously approved conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Do I have a second? Is that Commissioner Guerin?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, I'm assuming that you again are going to rest on what you have offered so far as to.
Thank you.
Of your motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware, again, self evident. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any commissioners that wish to speak or be or or otherwise be recognized on this item? I will then call the vote, beginning with Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Sarley.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Guerin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries eight to zero. Commissioner Hughes, I trust that you have a third motion.
Yes, sir. Sir, final one. This one will establish the site plan with the conditions and allow for the building of the building we heard this evening. I move that the planning commission recommend the county board adopt the attached ordinance for site plan number 346 to permit construction of up to 496 residential dwelling units, approximately. 518,614 square feet of residential gross floor area and up to 8,246 square feet of commercial retail. Located on a certain parcel of land hereby known as Potomac Yard land base C East RPC number 34 dash 27 dash 71. With modifications of the zoning ordinance requirements, including additional density, reduced parking and loading requirements. Increased compact parking, density exclusions and other modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development plan. Subject to the conditions of the attached ordinance dated one second. To my date. May 28, 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sarley. Commissioner Hughes, I'll give you the opportunity again.
Thanks, Commissioner Ware. I do again, want to say I really do appreciate both our development team from ZOM and our architect team from BKL, who's joined our community in bringing forward these beautiful buildings. I look forward to supporting them this evening. I will note for my fellow commissioners, as you know, my support is a hard win to achieve many times for a building. And this evening, my support is predicated on the fact that it is a PDSP amendment and the continuation of a previously approved site plan project. That delivered land and community benefits at a date earlier.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Are there any other commissioners who wish to speak or offer any amendments or otherwise be recognized on this item? Hearing none, I am going to proceed to calling the vote on this item, starting with Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Guerin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. And the motion passes. Eight to zero. Are there any other motions from any other commissioners on this item? Commissioner Patel.
I don't have a motion, Chairman Ware. I just wanted to recognize and appreciate Commissioner Hughes' last comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. So the three county staff recommended motions are all adopted. Ms. Johnson, I believe that that means that the item is is effectively disposed of for us. But I want to just check in with you before moving along. Am I am I right that we that we're good to move along? You may be on mute, or you may have stepped away. Unless anyone else is. Going to correct me, then I will just note. That as a reminder, we'll consider approval of the minutes of our May meetings at our July meeting. And at that time, we will also hear reports from our subcommittees. I would like to then also offer a special thank you to staff, applicants, members of the public for your time, consideration, and patience this evening. Items heard this evening are expected to go to the county board on June 12 or June 15. Planning Commissioner Morton will represent the planning commission at these county board hearings. Many staff members have labored to make this virtual meeting run smoothly. And thank you to all of you. Special thanks to Giselle Johnson. Joanne Harrison and SPRV SPRC supervisors Matthew Pfeifer. Also to David Wood and others who have contributed to this meeting. With that all being said, this commission meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Where's the gavel, Daniel? You got to drop it.
Oh, yeah. Drop the mic.
Maybe next time I'll have some sort of a gif in the chat.
Thank you. Nice job, Daniel.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Good job.
Take care, everybody.